Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to read the statement here. I remind you this is a court proceeding that's held in a courtroom. Therefore, order of the Coram is required. Testimony being given by witnesses will be taken down. Others in the courtroom must remain silent, may not interfere with proceedings. Chairman will instruct you as the rules and regulations be followed. Pay attention to his instructions and adhere to them. Thank you.
Good evening, and let's come to order. My name is Edward Finley. With me this evening are Commissioners Tanola D., Brown, Land, Jerry C., Duncan, James G., Patterson, Lyons Gray, and Daniel G. Cloughel. Now, call for hearing Doctor number E. 7, 1146, which is the application of Duke Energy Carolinas for adjustment of rates and charges to Flit Electric Utility Services in North Carolina. From August 25, 2017, Duke filed its application to adjust retail rates, request for an accounting order, and to consolidate dockets along with supporting direct testimony and exhibits of 18 witnesses. In my application, Duke requests authority to increase its retail rates and charges for a new additional overall annual North Carolina retail revenues of approximately $611 billion. An annual increase of approximately 12.8% over current revenue. In support of requested increase, Duke states that recent work to modernize its electric system, generate cleaner power through renewable sources, responsibly manage and close coal ash basins, respond to major storms like Rocky and Matthew, and continually improve service to customers are the primary drivers behind the company's request for increases in rates. As a part of this application, the company requests an accounting order to establish regulatory asset liability for coal ash basin closure cost over or under the amount established in this proceeding and those costs incurred between the cutoff date for this rate case and the effective date of new rates. Currently incurred purchase power costs from volifying facilities not recovered through fuel over or under the level established in the rate case, smart meter investments that will replace existing meters pursuant to the company's advanced metering infrastructure program, and the remaining book value of the ashful plant. The company has also requested to recover costs associated with the beneficial reuse of coal ash disposal for its annually adjusted fuel cost mechanism. On September 19, 2017, the commission issued an order establishing general rate cases suspending rates. On October 13, 2017, the commission issued an order scheduling investigation and hearing, establishing intervention and testimony due dates, and discovery guidelines and requiring public notice. Several hearings have been scheduled at locations around the state for the purpose of receiving testimony from customers addressing proposed rate adjustment, and that is the purpose of the hearing this evening pursuant to the October 13, 2017 order. An evidence hearing has been scheduled in Raleigh beginning February 19, 2018 to hear the expert technical witnesses of the parties who have been on the beat in this document. On October 18, 2017, the commission issued an order consolidating dockets. With docket number W. 7, 819, Duke's request to cancel the fleet nuclear project, and docket number E. 7, 1152, Duke's request to implement a child retention rider into the rate case application docket. On October 20, 2017, the commission issued an amended order scheduling investigation and hearing, establishing intervention and testimony due dates, and discovery guidelines, and requiring public notice. Interventions of parties have been filed and granted for the following: North Carolina Sustainable Energy Association, the Carolina Industrial Group for Fair Utility Rates, Carolina Utility Customers Association, Rate-Paying Neighbors, Environmental Defense Fund, North Carolina Attorney General, North Carolina Farm Bureau Federation, NC Warren, Cigar Club, the Crowder Company, Appalachian State University, North Carolina League of the Municipality, Beemar Electric Membership Corporation, Rutherford Electric Membership Corporation, Haywood Electric Membership Corporation, Blue Ridge Electric Membership Corporation, Commercial Group, Tech Customers, the City of Concord and Kings Mountain, the North Carolina Justice Centers, North Carolina Housing Coalition, numerous Natural Resource Defense Council, and the Southern Alliance for Clean Energy in the City of Durham. The public staff is here, and the public staff by statute represents the using and consuming public. Numerous statements of position have been received and filed in the official docket here. Now, this being the basis for the hearing tonight, I remember about reminding all members of the commission that Duke filed conflicts of interest in private, and any member has known conflict of interest with Dr. Mattis calling the full commission to see. There appear to be no conflict, so we will proceed, and are now called upon to penalties to announce their appearances case. We begin with the hour.
Give us Chairman Nurse of the Cushion, Robert Kayler, appearing on behalf of Duke Energy Carolinas.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the commission. Lucy Edmondson and Leila Cummings with the public staff, appearing on behalf of the using and consuming public.
I don't hear any woman or men that we need to address. Were you the testimony witness?
Mr. Chairman, the company, this is our district manager, Lisa Levin, would like to make the brief closing statement.
Levin. Now, ladies and gentlemen, come around to Levin and stand over here, please. This is an open statement, what the Duke is going to make. This is not evidence in the case. This is just some set ground rules for the position of the company in this case. Stand up here, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Finley and Commissioners. I am Lisa Levin, I'm the district manager for Duke Energy here in Franklin, North Carolina. We appreciate the Commissioners and our customers being here this evening. We know that there are a lot of people here that would want to speak or wanting to speak, and I wanted to let the audience know that we have a team of representatives from Duke Energy here to listen to what our customers have to say. In addition, if any customers have service issues or questions about operations, energy efficiency programs, or other topics, we'll be happy to address those with you following this hearing. Thank you, Commissioner Finley.
Anything on the staff?
No.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we appreciate your being here tonight to voice your views on this important matter. We welcome your testimony, and we are glad that you are here. There are a few ground rules that we're going to have to go over. The Deputy Sheriff mentioned some of them, but in conducting this hearing, the commission functions as a court. We do this pursuant to the statutes. We are in a courtroom for that reason. We must take sworn testimony pursuant to statute. That statute has been advanced by the General Assembly, and we must comply with it. We operate pursuant to the rules of procedure and evidence, and we want to conduct the hearing in a very orderly manner, so I request that you voluntarily agree and abide by these rules, and I trust that you will. If we have remedies available to us such as striking testimony or moving those who are underoperative, so will attempt another such things. In fact, the Deputy Sheriff has asked me to read this statute to you. This is pursuant to GS 143-318.17, disruption of official meetings. A person who willfully interrupts, disturbs, or disrupts an official meeting and do not be directed to leave the meeting, or the presiding officer willfully refuses to leave the meeting will be guilty of past two misdemeanor. I don't think we'll have to worry about that tonight. In order to facilitate a full and fair opportunity for all speakers to participate, the commission has guidelines for public hearings, and I'll go first right now. Witnesses must register with the public staff and verify that they are non-party and customer witnesses to begin with. They will be called by and large in the order in which they are listed on that roster. In order to allow each person an equal amount of time, there will be a limit, begin with a five minutes, and if we get too late in the evening, we might shorten that some. It will be amount of time that each witness may speak. Therefore, witnesses should endeavor to avoid cumulative, repetitive, and irrelevant testimony. I must have the witnesses swear and affirm prior to the witness providing the testimony in order to have the testimony received in the evidence. Only one witness may testify at a time. Witnesses shall refrain from offering opinions on matters not specified in the notice of hearing for this docket. People come into these hearings and have all sorts of opinions on important things like the Manix Prose Pipeline and fracking and renewables and that type of thing. Those are important topics, and we invest those things in other documents, but that's not what this case is all about. This case is about the increase in rates that Duke has requested, and we want to hear what your service complaints are and what your customer reactions are to what they are requesting, your ability to pay, and that type of thing. Also, witnesses should address their testimony to the commission, not members of the audience, and all testimony people can submit written testimony as long as they swear that it is true and accurate under oath. The witnesses shall be subject to cross-examination by the lawyers or by the commission should they choose to answer questions and ask a question, but that doesn't happen very often because we want to be expeditious with everybody's time. Persons who are customers of the applicant will be called to testify. Other persons may be called to testify in order which they register on the witness sheet. We may call people out of our order if we deem that's the best thing to do for a fuller spectrum of opinions and ideas. But the testimony is being recorded by the court reporter, therefore can ensure accuracy the right for now be limited unconventional modes of testimony, for example, no singing, no audience participation. The commission's goal is to receive testimony that will help the commission make decisions in this matter, so please do not obstruct the hearing by clapping, booing, dissing, or other such behavior. In addition, please refrain from personal criticisms or attacks on the participants, including the applicant's attorneys and representatives of the commission and the public staff, to ensure that all witnesses are heard and their testimony is properly transcribed by the court reporter. The commission will maintain hearing room to the coram. I think that does it. All right, are you personally?
All right, I'll be calling people. I'm going to check and see first if you are a customer, and I'm going to put the customers in first, and then if you're not a customer, we will call you, but you will be toward the end. Also, I'm going to call the first person, and I'll tell you also who's the next person so that person can be ready to come on up. David Walters.
Customer.
Okay, you will come on up.
Yeah.
And the second person, Selma Sparks, are you a customer?
Yes.
So you'll be next.
Well, would you like to meet?
You can come around here through the gate.
Mr. Walters, you can come over here and sit in the witness stand, please.
May I have a seat?
May I have a stand?
Thank you.
Put your left hand on that Bible and raise your right hand first. Ms. Walters, where the testimony about to give this case away the truth, the whole truth and facts, please help me out.
So help me out.
And Mr. Walters, if you'd like, can you want to have a seat?
He wants to stand.
Okay. Mr. Walters, please state your name and address for the record.
David Walters.
Walters, sorry.
W.A.T.T.E.R.S. And I live here in Franklin.
And you're a Duke Energy customer?
Yes, I am, thank you.
And I think I've seen you here before at another hearing?
I reckon.
Okay. And do you have a statement you'd like to make?
Would you say that again?
Do you have a statement that you'd like to make tonight?
I would, may I?
Please do.
Thank you very much. Thank the North Carolina Commission. It's a pleasure to be here. I have a few words. I'm a...
I'd like more than a few words there, Mr. Walters. Let's get on with it, please.
I'm a World War II veteran, Air Corps, working with the Office of Strategic Services. Before going into the service, I studied electrical engineering at NC State College in Raleigh. Afterward, I graduated in electrical engineering from Georgia Tech, operating in electric power generation and transmission. I can design a megawatt generator with a slide rule, and with a computer, I can design multi-phase transmission system. My roots are deep in Macon County, generations in these mountains. Professionally, I spent 40 years in the Washington DC area doing such research as development for NASA, the National Aeronautics and Space Administration, on satellite design. Additionally, I worked on the design of our ballistic missile nuclear submarine, the Boom, and other top-secret programs that are not at liberty to discuss here. I'm asking the Commissioners time here. I'm wasting it with my curriculum vitae, but please allow me to say that I was invited expert witness before the United States Senate Select Committee on Intelligence and the Senate Judiciary Subcommittee on the Constitution, where I contributed language for the Foreign Intelligence Surveillance Act and the Bill of Rights Procedures Act. But let me get on with my pitch here. The Duke Energy Corporation has given us the finest electric power services that we might expect with few interruptions as possible. We can't avoid the acts of God such as lightning strikes and falling trees or nosy squirrels. The amazing thing about Duke is the effort that they make to get you back online as quickly as possible. If your power goes down in the middle of the night, they don't wait until the morning. They get on to it immediately. Having done their job, the company will give you a courtesy phone call to verify that you're back online. Additionally, if you don't know it, Duke Energy will come out to your house or business and make assessments of your power consumption. If you want, give you low-energy bulbs and tubes, LED types, all for free. Now, isn't that nice? Be thankful. The problem is that the electricity you use, the less electricity you use, the higher the rate you're charged per kilowatt hour. Now, isn't that a kicker? But that's nice, and just remember that we're a wasteful nation. Problem with this is that the less electricity you use, the higher rate you are charged per kilowatt hour. Yes. One is reminded of the great minimalist architect Mies van der Rohe, who wrote, "Less is more." But let's move on.
Move on, please, Mr. Walters.
What did you say?
Move on, please. Time is up. Let's go. I think I rushed you, but I'll move on.
But let's move on. We remember another Georgia Tech man who became president, and it was Mr. Jimmy Carter, who in June 30, 1980, introduced and signed the Emergency Securities Act, S. 952. In it, he recognized that we, as a nation, are burning up our national resources, oil, gas, coal, at an alarming rate. When these fossil fuels and vituminous materials are gone, they're gone forever. Better use them more wisely than burning them up and polluting the upper atmosphere. In this legislation, President Carter provided incentives and funds for a gradual transition into renewable energy consumption, solar, wind, and so on. He specified that local power companies must accept power from the little guys, those with solar arrays on the roof, and entrepreneurs with larger solar farms, and compensate them at the going rate.
What do you want us to do with this case? What do you want us to do? What do you want the commission to do in this case?
I don't know.
Your time is up, so please hurry.
Now, take a trip with me out of town, west on Route 64, over winding Stair Gap and the Chunky Gal Mountains. And there you'll find Clay County, the smallest in North Carolina. And what do you see? Fifteen large solar farms, each four and a half acres, each pumping out a megawatt of power into the national grid through the TVA. These arrays are connected through the Blue Ridge Mountain Electric Company, EMC. The landowner is compensated handsomely in pennies per kilowatt hour. The entrepreneur, installer, maintainer does well, and so does Blue Ridge. Now, Duke has rigged the rules so that it is not economically feasible for the little rooftop guy to pump into the grid system, and they made it illegal for the third-party entrepreneur. Please note that until recently, our state governor had been a career Duke executive. Figuratively, he had dragged out, he was dragged out of office, kicking and screaming that the vote tally was incorrect, noting that he didn't win the election. He, at the last minute, transferred many of the vital executive powers to the Duke-controlled legislature in order to emasculate the incoming governor of three men. But enough of that. Come with me to the beautiful North Carolina city of Greensboro and see the modest faith community church, who, according to Jimmy Carter's energy initiative, built a small solar array on their roof, just a kilowatt or so, to power their church, with the excess going into the local grid. This activity was encouraged and sponsored by a local nonprofit organization, NC Warren.
Mr. Walters, that's another case. Can you bring it to a close? We've got a lot of people waiting to testify, please.
Now, the Duke empire...
Mr. Walters?
I'm listening.
Well, bring it to a close, please. Bring it to a close, that's a different case.
Yes, it is, indeed. It's important.
That's another case.
Please note that there are only four states that have legislated against third-party connections. They're Florida, Kentucky, Oklahoma, and North Carolina. The United States are plodding along in the switch to the alternative dual energies of peddling 17%. Considered Germany, whom we pulled out of complete destruction after World War II, now electrically powers itself at 85% renewable solar and wind. Now, let us bear in mind that Duke is sponsoring the drilling practice known as fracking, an attempt to suck every very last drop of gas from the underground. It is a procedure which could pollute our groundwater and destabilize lower geology, even perhaps contributing to earthquakes. The latest studies by NASA indicate that factoring blow-off of hydrocarbons is significantly contributory to global warming. Your real estate property is not your own with a fracking drill which ultimately turns horizontal, and through the drilling may start from half a mile away and make it, and snake its way deep under your house without you even knowing it. The sun is our greatest energy resource, putting out 3.86 septillion watts of energy per second. That's 24 zeros. And speaking of waste, most of us are aware of the enormous piles of coal ash for decades that have piled up outside 13 coal-burning electric power generating plants in and about North Carolina. Now, Duke has been ordered to remove and dispose this garbage. The Dan River still is an environmental disaster. It would appear that Duke, with its proposed rate increase, would expect us to pay for this millions of dollars of removal enterprise, as well as rewarding back-end investors upgrading its equipment and expanding the system. Most of us are not aware of the enormity of Duke's activity throughout the United States and elsewhere. Trillions of dollars of enterprise. Few are aware of Duke's activity in the communist country Russia, the evil empire as Ronald Reagan coined it. Is that what you want, your electric dollar to go for? Elbow.
All right, Mr. Walters, that's enough. You're done.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. I'd like to know what I've tried to warn people on to do, but please, I'll leave your testimony to one of the relevant in this case.
Mr. Walters has a written statement. Could we get that in the record?
Yes. We want you to write a statement in the record, Mr. Walters.
We can read the rest of it, then.
Thank you.
We got copies.
That's very good.
You can leave it with the clerk right here.
You want to give it, want me to give it to the clerk?
To the clerk.
Thank you, dear.
Call your next witness, please.
Selma Sparks, who's the next witness? And after that will be Representative Kevin Corbin.
Have a seat now, please.
Put your left hand on the Bible, please. Raise your right hand. Ms. Walters, where the testimony about to give this case away the truth, the whole truth and facts, please help me out.
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Selma Sparks, and I'm at 197 Middlebrook Drive in Franklin, North Carolina.
Please make your statement.
All right, I, um, this is the first time I've done this, so I may not have understood how, but I'm simply making my position. I don't think Duke requires an electricity rate increase. No increase at all, never mind, not even 1% of an increase at all. The things that they're talking about wanting this increase for, a new generation of power plants that will keep us dependent on fossil fuels for another 50 years, costs related to planning and partial construction of their abandoned lead nuclear project, and partial cleanup of their coal ash mess. I don't believe I should have to pay for that. I'm 86 years old, and I am definitely on fixed income, and I'm sure there are a lot of other seniors around on fixed income, and there's no reason why people, why the customers should have to pay for Duke's errors. They've got the money. Their stockholders, when you buy stock in a company, you're taking a risk. They're the ones who can pay for it. I see no reason why I should have to pay for any of this. No reason at all. I see no reason why Duke should have any increase. They got an increase a couple of years ago. They don't need it. They're not out of money. They need to take care, and that coal ash mess, come on, let's get it cleaned up. You did it. I didn't do it. So I think very definitely that they should not be given an increase. I feel this very strongly, and when I saw that they were looking for this increase, I really got rather angry, because I do not see that a lot of people here, working people, who can't afford to pay more. You don't want to stay in your home and be cold, we've had some cold weather. Now, why should you have to pay so much more? The last bill I got, believe me, was unbelievable, and, you know, but I pay it. But I don't think I should pay not one penny more. There should not be even 1% increase in our rates. I don't think we should have to pay for all of this. They've got the money. Use what you've got. Don't take mine. That's really all I have to say.
All right, thank you, Ms. Barnes. Coming out, Mike.
Kevin Corbin?
Over. Yes.
Corbin, 164. Do you have a thought? Are you done, Harrison?
Sir.
Stand. You want to put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand, please. Ms. Walters, where the testimony about to give this case away the truth, the whole truth and facts, please help me out.
Sir.
Stand. You want to, which is about to have a trial, and I'd like to add, Salma's ready to testify in this case with the truth, the whole truth, and that's what the truth is.
Yes, it is. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Kevin Corbin, and I represent the North Carolina General Assembly, and I represent citizens of Macon County, Clay County, Graham County, and Cherokee County. That's about eighty-five thousand people, and I thought, on my way here tonight, what could I say that would represent the interests of all those people? There are a lot of things that have already been discussed here tonight, I'm not going to get into all those side issues, because I don't think it's appropriate, but I think there's two, two things clearly I want to talk about. First is the service we get from Duke, second is the rate increase. The service we get from Duke, I can tell you, I live out, far out in the country, I'm a country boy, and our powers have been out a number of times with power outages, with severe weather over the past few years, and Duke has always been phenomenal to get out to us, to get the power on, to call us Texas, let us know in any way they can when the power will be back on. So I commend them for that. The service, I think, in our end of the state is great, and we appreciate that. As far as the rate increase, and we're very brief, fifteen percent, I think is too much. Most of us in this room would probably be happy if we had fifteen percent raise in five years. I'm not sure, running my own business, I would have to work really hard to make that happen, and most of you probably would too. So fifteen percent in one year creates a hardship, especially for a lot of people who are on fixed incomes and cannot afford that. I do understand expenses that businesses have, I get that, and appreciate the service you have, but I do think the fifteen percent is too much. So I think you need to strong to look at that, and the lady mentioned before that there was an increase not too long ago. Last ever mentioned, I'm on a committee in the General Assembly that's trying to get internet out to rural areas like this. So with that said, I appreciate Duke and having power out to the last mile, if you would, fifty-plus years ago. Thank you for that. We're glad that we have that, we hope we can do that with internet, coming up and follow that example, and we'd like to work with Duke hopefully and get that accomplished for our citizens. But we hope you would consider the fifteen percent being excessive and too much for the citizens of our district. Thank you.
Questions? Thank you for coming out tonight.
Don Erickson? After that will be Robert Smith.
Salma's ready to testify in this case with the truth, the whole truth, and that's what the truth is.
I want to thank everybody for giving us the opportunity to speak out tonight.
Mr. Erickson, if I could get you started a little bit, ask you a couple introductory questions.
My name is Don Erickson. I'm a resident of Macon County, and I'm a customer of Duke.
Okay, and that is D-O-N-N?
Correct.
Okay, and what's your address, please?
Four zero four Bird Farm Road, Franklin.
Great, and please make your statement.
I do not believe that Duke Energy should be granted the rate hike for the following reasons. Duke Energy is a big company, not some struggling company, operation. Fortune dot com says that named Duke Energy is number one hundred and twenty-one in the top Fortune five hundred companies. Revenues of twenty-three billion dollars, profits of two billion dollars, and assets of one hundred and thirty-two billion dollars. According to Wikipedia dot com, a nonpartisan organization named Public Campaign reported in December two thousand and eleven that Duke spent seventeen point four seven million dollars on lobbying and not paying any taxes during two thousand and eight through two thousand and ten, and receiving two hundred and sixteen million dollars in tax rebates, despite making a profit of five point four billion dollars that year, and increasing executive pay by one hundred and forty-five percent to seventeen point two million dollars in two thousand and ten for its top five executives. In July two thousand and twelve, Duke Energy paid former Progress Energy CEO Bill Johnson forty-four million dollars in compensation, including ten million dollars severance, for essentially twenty minutes of work as a CEO before he was dismissed, and that was explained as a loss of confidence. Duke Energy is a big company. It can afford to do things right, but it has a history of not doing things right. Again, according to Wikipedia dot com, following a February second, two thousand and fourteen coal ash bill, which was the third largest of its kind in U.S. history, the U.S. Attorney's Office opened a grand jury investigation into Duke Energy and North Carolina regulators. The U.S. Attorney subpoenaed over twenty officials of the North Carolina administration sought records of investments, cash, or other items of value from Duke to regulators. Also, Duke Energy owns Crystal River Energy Complex in rural Citrus County, Florida. In late two thousand and twelve, Duke paid nineteen million dollars of their thirty-six million dollar property bill for two thousand and twelve, and filed a lawsuit against the county claiming the assessment was too high. The county appraiser, Jeff Green, hired two independent appraisal firms at a cost of three hundred and thirty thousand dollars to reappraise the property. Their conclusion was the two hundred and thirty-two million dollar appraisal should have been, I'm sorry, billion dollars appraisal should have been three hundred and forty, three point four seven billion, and the thirty-six million dollar tax bill should be fifty-four million dollars. Green stated, "There are a lot of unreported and underreported items." Finally, in September two thousand and sixteen, the eight hundred billion dollar Government Pension Fund of Norway excluded investing in Duke and three of its subsidiaries, citing Duke as "a risk of severe environmental damage." In conclusion, if a company is allowed to simply raise its rates to rectify irresponsible management practices, there will be no incentive to modify the way they're doing business. The burden of responsibility must be borne by the company and its stockholders, not the customers. It is the responsibility of the North Carolina Utilities Commission to ensure that Duke Energy provides electric service in a responsible way. Approving this rate hike request is not a responsible way. Thank you very much.
Questions? Thank you for coming out tonight.
I'm not, I'm not directly a customer of Duke. I'm a customer of Allen Powers.
You'll say, say, to begin, we'll bring you up.
Henry Horton? You're a customer, please?
I am a customer.
You'll have to have the file, please, right? Salma's ready to testify in this case with the truth, the whole truth, and that's what the truth is.
Yes, I do.
Mr. Horton, please state your name and address for the record.
Henry Horton, one thirty-one Clyde Street, Apartment A.
Here in Franklin?
Here in Franklin.
Okay, please make your statement.
I want to get what Mr. Erickson and Ms. Sparks said. I agree wholeheartedly. I went online this week and did a bunch of research, but I'm not real good with that sort of thing. I'm a retired gardener, I know plants, and that's about it. But one thing I do know is that I think I probably represent a lot of people who are not here tonight. Due to unforeseen circumstances, I arrived in North Carolina three years ago, and things that I had hoped would set me up for life did not occur, and were I not able to finally get Section Eight housing, I would be on the street. So every dollar counts, and I'm sure there are a lot of, I've, I've, I've been around eighty-two years, and I know there are a lot of people who don't come to these things because they have family obligations, they have maybe working two jobs or more, and they just don't have it to get here, and then the weather tonight was not. I don't own a car, I walked here. So I'm here, I guess, to represent myself and a lot of other people in this county who are on fixed incomes, who are barely scraping by, and I did see some of the things online that Mr. Erickson brought out, but like I say, I'm not real good at getting it organized for this sort of thing, so I am totally against any raise. The shareholders are going to be paid over two billion dollars this year, and I do remember reading that Duke Energy has shown progress for ninety-two years, has never missed a quarterly payout to their shareholders, so I think that they need to take care of their mistakes, not us. Thank you.
Salma's ready to testify in this case with the truth, the whole truth, and that's what the truth is.
Yes.
Mr. Crawford, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Fred Crawford. I live at six zero one Conleys Creek in Whittier in Swain County.
And are you a Duke customer?
I am.
Please make your statement.
Thank you. Chairman Finley and members of the commission, first of all, as I said, my name is Fred Crawford, and I'm retired and a full-time resident of Swain County. First of all, I want to thank you all for your public service, and I also want to commend staff for their work on the website. Having all these documents available on the portal is very helpful, and I appreciate y'all keeping that all up today. Today, I'm here to speak in opposition to Duke Energy's rate increase. I realize a big part of your job is to balance the need for rates that support an enterprise's costs against the public's need to have those costs justifiable and properly controlled. Base fuel costs, transportation costs, infrastructure, maintenance, and expansion are important components of any rate requirement, and I get that, but that's not what this is about. My main concern is the part of this rate that represents risk transfer. Specifically, the transfer of at least three hundred and thirty-six million dollars in costs associated with coal combustion residuals, or CCRs, from Duke Energy's enterprise to the public. I'll give a rough analogy to illustrate my concern. If I were a restaurant owner, I cannot pour used grease down the sewer drain. Well, I could, but I would face the risk of ruining my pipes, getting sued by the landlord to cover the cost of the plumbing, and I would risk fines by code inspectors. If I ignored those risks, I would have to charge twenty dollars for hamburger and probably go out of business. So instead of taking an improper business risk, I pay the incremental cost of properly handling and disposing my grease. While Duke Energy has been pouring grease down their drain, and now asking your permission to charge me twenty dollars for hamburger, and the real kicker here is that Duke is the only restaurant in town, I'd have no choice but to pay it. Duke is asking you to have me pay for the risk they took in not properly handling their coal ash. Duke executives, board members, employees are very smart people. None of the risks that they now, that are now being realized should surprise anyone. In fact, the risks associated with coal ash were listed several times in Duke Energy's annual report as operational risks that could affect shareholders' returns. Duke Energy's two thousand and sixteen annual report also listed net income at two point one billion, and net income in two thousand and fifteen at two point eight billion. These revenues provided stockholders a nice dividend. Make no mistake, these stockholders, and I am one, understand there may be times when our investments do not give the return that we hope. I believe that this may be one of those times. Duke Energy improperly ignored the risks posed by their CCRs. Those improper risks and associated losses should be borne by the enterprise only, and subsequently borne by shareholders of the utility. To transfer, to transfer any direct or indirect costs of those risks away from the enterprise and onto the consumer would set a dangerous precedent, and that's what I'm really concerned about. I urge you, in the interest of the public, to deny any utility the ability to transfer improper business risks from the regulated utility onto the backs of the citizens of this state. In fact, I believe that as a regulator, that is one of your most important roles. Thank you.
Salma's ready to testify in this case with the truth, the whole truth, and that's what the truth is.
Yes, I do.
Please take your name and address for the record.
My name is Virginia Bugash. I live at three fourteen Swiss Village Road, Otto.
And you're a Duke Energy customer?
Yes, I am.
Please make...
Please, ma'am.
Please make your statement.
I am here as a citizen of this state that, and I feel that Duke is bad and good. Duke has really done a great job of maintaining its lines, taking care of its customers when there's any kind of a disaster affecting us, but they are extremely lax in protecting us against their gross negligence. They have not only put our people's lives at risk with these coal ash ponds, but when they put them in, as far as I can understand, it was illegal. What they're doing is against the Constitution or against the laws, and they have really done us a complete disservice, so I feel they do not deserve any rate increase, and that they and their stockholders should pay the bill for these gross negligence up there. That's it. Thank you.
I'm from Freeman, not from it, never law.
Salma's ready to testify in this case with the truth, the whole truth, and that's what the truth is.
Mr. Freeman, please state your name and address for the record.
Abram Friedman, thirteen forty-six Diltsborough Road in Silver, North Carolina.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Please take your, make your statement.
Good evening, commissioners. Welcome once again to western North Carolina. You seem to be making a habit of this. I also want to express my appreciation to the workers of Duke Energy who get out there on icy nights and fix power lines, and I think they do a wonderful job at doing that, and I think that the workers of Duke Energy, maybe the management, ought to consider handing over the company to the workers who do such a good job, because they don't do such a good job of managing, I'm afraid. As members of the environmental community have repeatedly warned the public, the press and the Utilities Commission, the business plan and integrated resource plan that Duke Energy is pursuing, and the Utilities Commission has repeatedly approved, is creating a never-ending spiral of higher and higher costs to their customers. This time, they are asking for an eighteen percent rate increase, is what I saw on the web pages. I've been hearing fifteen percent at this hearing, but what I saw on the Utilities I've been hearing 15% at this hearing, but what I saw on the Utility Commission webpage is 18%. Duke Energy is a for-profit corporate business entity. They'll do whatever they feel is necessary to increase corporate income to benefit their shareholders. We understand that. But it's the function of the Utilities Commission to guard the public interest, not the corporate interests of Duke Energy. Over the past decade or more, a broad spectrum of people and organizations has warned Duke Energy against investing in a foolhardy nuclear power plant, the Lee Station in Gaff, South Carolina. Nuclear energy has no future. There's no proven method of safely storing high-level nuclear waste for hundreds of thousands of years. But Duke Energy has chosen to remain blind to the accidents and impacts of Three Mile Islands, Chernobyl, Fukushima, to the ever-rising cost of construction of nuclear plants, to the past failures of nuclear construction in North Carolina that cost ratepayers hundreds of millions of dollars and led to a legislative ban in the 1980s on construction work-in-progress charges for new power plants. But now that Duke's lobby team has muscled through a reverse of that ban, they have the chutzpah, you know what chutzpah is?
Yeah.
They have the chutzpah to ask ratepayers to once again pay for their corporate irresponsibility. Duke is also demanding we pay for their criminal neglect while only partially cleaning up the catastrophic coal ash mess they've created. In addition, Duke Energy wants the ratepayers, us, to front the money to build a new infrastructure that will keep us dependent on fossil fuels for the next 30 to 50 years, as the worldwide scientific community is urgently screaming at us that we need to begin rapidly phasing out the extraction and burning of fossil fuels to avoid the worst consequences of climate change. Wake up, commissioners, please. You have the power and responsibility to stop this nonsense. It is your responsibility to oversee the most cost-efficient, safest, most reliable, and environmentally beneficial system of providing electricity to the public. It's your job at this time to stand aside from Duke Energy and tell the North Carolina General Assembly that you can no longer perform your required task as long as this antiquated system of regulated monopoly continues to rule North Carolina. I urge the General Assembly to pass House Bill 427 and Senate Bill 236, the Efficient and Affordable Energy Rates Bill, which I've handed you a copy of. It's time for North Carolina to enter the 21st century. Thank you.
General Law. Ms. Freeman, will you fill our mark? Is it that this field is going to be? Thank you. Good afternoon. How's it going? Bob Boyd.
You saw on this testimony about to give this case with the truth, the whole truth, and that's about the truth.
I do.
Ms. Lawley, would you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is General Lawley. I live at 869 Poplar Cove Road in Franklin.
Please make your statement.
The proposed rate hike requested by Duke Energy is unacceptable. Duke Energy is asking its customers to pay a 10.75% return on equity for Duke's shareholders and fund a $14 million annual salary for its top executive and to bear the cost of cleaning up Duke's illegal coal ash dumping, an action which was approved by that same CEO and by those shareholders that now would to profit from the damage done to North Carolina families, the same families that Duke now wants to charge for that cleanup. And what do North Carolinians get for that 17% rate increase? We will get more families, livestock, and wildlife being poisoned by coal ash dumped in our rivers and streams, and more pollution dumped in our air from their dirty coal. We won't get, what we won't get is reliable energy. Even as we are meeting here tonight, there are people in these mountains who are busy preparing our homes for the power outages that we will get from this weather, not might get, but will get. Because even minor inclement weather for us means power outages, and those power outages can take days or weeks to resolve. I agree that the people who work to get our power back on are excellent. They are dedicated, they are hardworking, as a fact is that the infrastructure they're working with is terrible and it is not being addressed by Duke Energy. Everybody around here has to have alternative heating sources, and those who can't afford it have generators. One thing about having Duke Power for your power company is that you quickly learn how to live off the grid and be self-sufficient. And of course, we get rate hikes. We get to clean up after Duke officials who want raises and rewards but who refuse to take responsibility for their actions. We get to pay for the lead nuclear plant that has never been built and may never be built. And by the way, just as an aside, given how they have managed their coal ash dumps, I would be terrified to have them controlling nuclear power because God knows what they're going to do with that. They say they want to modernize the grid, but they have never put forth an actual concrete plan for how they're going to do that. And without a plan, how do they know how much it will cost? What if, without a plan, how long will it be before they're back asking for more? It was just a couple of years ago that they asked for a rate increase and got it. You know what my bank would do if I asked for $53 million to not build a power plant and asked for $20 million for a project that had no plan? It'd laugh me out of the room. But Duke thinks that all of its customers are a free and apparently rather stupid bank that they can take money from and never pay back. If you believe that they are going to give back that money when they don't build that plant or ask for more money, or not ask for more money for that unplanned modernization, I have a nice small plan for you. What the people who have been drinking bottled water for two years because of Duke's coal ash won't get is clean water or reimbursement for their losses. We will all get to pay more for less. In my household, there are three people over 65 years old, including myself. My older brother is partially blind and unable to work. My husband has COPD and needs a CPAP machine to keep him breathing through the night. Every month, we get a blame the victim letter from Duke shaming us that our energy usage is higher than similar homes. We counted 96 outages in our home in a period of two years. Duke continually made excuses about squirrels because there's nowhere else in the world that has squirrels. I've lived several other places in the world that have squirrels, and we never had power outages. I even lived in California, and we managed to keep the power going through earthquakes. And I lived on the Gulf Coast, and we managed to keep the power going through close calls of hurricanes. But here, if there's a minor storm, we lose power. It turns out that the problem with our 96 outages was a faulty piece of equipment, and the only way we got it fixed was because we accidentally called on a day when the normal people were on vacation, and we got a new guy who didn't know he wasn't supposed to tell us that there was a problem. They came out and fixed it, and things have gotten better since. It's been a whole six weeks since our last outage, a whole five weeks at the place I We don't get 17% raises where I work. My family doesn't get 17% raises. We can't afford to keep paying more and more to Duke. We paid $200 to Duke last month so that we could keep the power on so that my husband can live through the night. We can't afford to keep paying for Duke's mistakes and the lifestyle of rich executives who make stupid and illegal decisions and then want to be paid for it. I don't know about you, but I was raised to think that a person takes responsibility for their actions and pays for their mistakes. If Duke gets this increase, it sends a message that in North Carolina, victims pay and liars and miscreants are rewarded. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Lawley, do you know what piece of equipment it was that has been replaced?
I do not know what it was. They said that a piece of equipment in a central box was faulty and that it was going out of service periodically and that it would kick off all of the power in the neighborhood for anywhere from five minutes to five hours.
Let me have your address again, please.
869 Poplar Cove Road.
Thank you, ma'am.
Chairman, could we ask that Duke make a report on what the issue was with her address and report back to the-
Yes, ladies and gentlemen, to the extent we do hear service problems, that's one of the things we want to hear, and why the reasons that we are here. We have taken a made a record of this, and we will follow up on that and make sure that Duke addresses those things.
Bob Boyd. Mr. Boyd, it's Mary Lynn Max.
You saw on this testimony about to give this case with the truth, the whole truth, and that's about the truth.
Good evening, Mr. Boyd.
Can the people in the rear hear me because I can't talk very loud? Good.
Mr. Boyd, would you give your name and address, please?
I also can't hear too good.
Could you give us your name and address, please?
Name and address. Your name and address.
My name is Bob Boyd. I live out in Idaho, 45 Varner Road, behind the Assembly God Church.
And if you can ask, please make your statement.
Mine is more or less informal, a letter to Duke Power. After I read the article in the paper, it took me three days to figure out how much money $600 million and $11 was. I don't deal in those figures as a rule. Not accustomed to that kind of money, and I don't think anybody else in here is. In the first place, every month when I get a bill, I also get a letter from Duke Power. I am using more electricity than anybody in my neighborhood. Did you know that? Well, it's simply because I have four refrigerators, 20 television sets, two washing machines, and on and on and on. I pay my bill, I pay my bill on time. I have two apartments. They are both heated by electricity. Part of my home is heated with electricity. Now, I really don't think it's anybody's business, if I pay my bill on time, how much electricity I use. If I was selling apples and you came to my place and bought a bushel of apples every day, I would be very happy. I wouldn't say, well, why do you use so many apples? Why do you buy so many apples? It does not make sense. It just does not make sense. Then also, they always slip a little thing in my bill that says, can you help somebody else pay their bill? No, I can't help anybody else. I've got my hands full. This month, I paid a $349.84 bill. I paid it and kept my mouth shut. One of the things that, what a little bit of information that I do get, I kind of think about it. For instance, I'm 84 years old, and I travel quite a bit, and I've been to Niagara Falls, New York, great big power system. I've been all through the Tennessee Valley Organization, dams after dams, power, all kinds of power generators and everything. I've been out in Oklahoma, I've been in the Dakotas, I've been all around, Pennsylvania. And I always make a habit to stop if they have a power plant and see what's going on. I have never seen what these people call a dirty generator. These generators inside these dams and buildings look like brand-new cars lined up, and usually two or three of them aren't even running. Now, they're talking about this fabulous price for cleaning of generators when that's something that should be done all the time anyway. What is the difference? My goodness, people, how in the world could anybody come up with a figure of $611 million to get rid of the ashes? They better start chopping down some of these trees around here that are knocking the lanes down. I live out in the Idaho area. I've had terrible electric system or service out there. They come back and do it over and over and over, the same thing, because trees are falling down. Now, I don't see why we should have any rate increase at all, and I think everybody in the room should agree with that. I don't know, but that's the way I feel, and I think that I was in business 52 and a half years, and yes, you have to make a profit, and you have to make a good profit, but you don't have to make an exorbitant profit, you know, at the cost of the people that are paying. It's completely out of hand, completely. And I guarantee you, these people at the end will probably get their rate increase anyway. There's just things that we don't know about. It's about time we start knowing about it. I've never been to one of these meetings before, but I'll tell you right now, people are better start taking, see what's going on. Thank you.
Mr. Boyd?
Good evening, commissioners and attendees.
My name is Tamara Zwannak. I live at 83 Artway Lane. I'm from Franklin, North Carolina. Z is in zebra, W-I-N-A-K.
Please make your statement.
Thank you. First of all, since I've listened to some of the testimony, I'd like to say that I'm an investor. I know about the stock market, I know about dividends, and I know about company responsibility. Companies such as BP, you know, that had that recent oil spill because of the defective part, they have to pay for the cleanup. When, I'm new to this area. My family came here, though, in 1723 to North Carolina, so we have a deep history here and in the United States. And, you know, corporate responsibility is something that Americans expect. I was shocked when I came to the area and I saw that Duke Energy was passing on the cost of coal ash cleanup to customers. Now, as a stockholder myself, I think that you should be ashamed of yourselves. And I just have a few questions. I mean, how can this longstanding practice that you engaged in now be passed on to consumers? As a business, when you were operating your company, didn't you take into consideration the pollution you were causing or the cleanup that needed to be done? Did you just sit on this for years and then all of a sudden decide, oh gee, we have a big mess here? You know, let's, how can we pass this on? I mean, as a stockholder, if a company makes a mistake, I don't expect, as a stockholder, to keep seeing the same dividend increases. Generally, the dividend goes down. I mean, stockholders demand that their companies perform. So I have a question about your board of directors and the way you run your company. I just don't understand. This is not a normal way that companies operate, as far as my understanding. And as a stockholder, I don't invest in your company. I don't invest in utilities. So I just want to know why the cost wasn't built in initially to the cost of doing business? How is it that you decided all of a sudden you want to pass it on? Generally, as I said, that's passed on to consumers at the time. And if you made a mistake, the company should clean it up and the stockholder should pay.
company responsibility. Companies such as BP, you know, that has that recent oil spill because of the defective part, they have to pay for the cleanup. When, I'm new to this area. My family came here, though, in seventeen twenty-three to North Carolina, so we have a deep history here and in the United States. And, you know, corporate responsibility is something that Americans expect. I was shocked when I came to the area and I saw that Duke Energy was passing on the cost of coal ash cleanup to customers. Now, as a stockholder myself, I think that you should be ashamed of yourselves. And I just have a few questions. I mean, it's, how can this longstanding practice that you engaged in now be passed on to consumers? As a business, when you were operating your company, didn't you take into consideration the pollution you were causing or the cleanup that needed to be done? Did you just sit on this for years and then all of a sudden decide, oh gee, we have a big mess here, you know, let's, how can we pass this on? I mean, as a stockholder, if a company makes a mistake, I don't expect, as a stockholder, to keep seeing the same dividend increases. Generally, the dividend goes down. I mean, stockholders demand that their companies perform. So I have a question about your board of directors and the way you run your company. I just don't understand. This is not a normal way that companies operate, as far as my understanding. And as a stockholder, I don't invest in your company. I don't invest in utilities. So I just want to know why the cost wasn't built in initially to the cost of doing business? How is it that you decided all of a sudden you want to pass it on? Generally, as I said, that's passed on to consumers at the time. And if you made a mistake, the company should clean it up and the stockholder should pay the cost of doing business. That's the way capitalism works. But it seems that you've got some kind of, I don't know if it's corruption or what exactly is going on here, but you've been allowed to engage in this type of business operation, which is really shocking. And it just doesn't seem like it's operating in the normal course of business. So I have some concerns, and I'm just wondering why the Environmental Protection Agency hasn't been called in or some regulatory agency, some outside entity, to investigate the company and what you're up to. It's just really something way outside the standard operating consumers of how corporation operates. Say, for example, Coca-Cola, if they make a mistake, something happens in their product, or with aspirin, or, you know, any of the number of corporate mishaps we've had over the years. I mean, the companies have to pay for that. So Duke shouldn't be allowed to pass this on to consumers. And when I read about it, I have a Twitter account, I said, hey, let's boycott Duke. I'm going to reduce my use by eighteen percent. If you think you're going to raise my rate eighteen percent, you know, we can call for that. It's not protest here, I apologize, Your Honor. And I think it's an honor, what your title is, but excuse me.
You don't mean honor me.
So, you know, the proposed rate increase places really an undue hardship on so many people, on so many customers, so many senior customers, people on fixed incomes. And I just, again, I just don't see how you can countenance this kind of operation you're engaged in. And they don't have any choice. Where else are we going to go? You know, there's no other choice. People have to use your company. So I think that the only thing that option the consumers have, unfortunately, many people just have to reduce their use, or like so many other people here, find alternatives. But I just really want to reprimand you and say, you know, as people on this commission, I really don't think you're living up to the standards of what Americans expect from a corporate entity. Thank you.
Do you have, do representatives here who can answer your rhetorical questions, if you'd like to stick around at the end of the meeting, and rest assured, the DPA is very much involved.
Thank you so much.
Please take your name and address for the record.
Margaret Crown over, thirty-six Honey Maple Lane, Franklin, North Carolina.
Please make your statement.
You have assets in Canada, Latin America. Your revenues are twenty-three
You understand, these are the Duke folks, so these are the commissioners, you understand that, right?
Okay, okay, all right. But they have revenues, net sales of twenty-three forty-six billion dollars. In two thousand sixteen, it was twenty-two seventy-four billion dollars. Gross profit was nine point seventy-seven billion dollars, almost ten billion dollars. I'm a retired elementary school teacher of forty years. Everyone here tonight and in our community need to contact their congressmen, their representatives, their senators about this eighteen percent hike. On the news, it was today, it was sixteen plus, three-quarters of the hike. Kevin says it's fifteen percent hike. I don't even think they even know what the hike's going to be. And so nobody will know until it's already taken care of and done. But why didn't they do twenty percent? Well, maybe the middle-class people and the poor people would think, well, maybe eighteen percent would go pretty well with everybody. But now, I don't know if it's sixteen plus or what it is. And I hate to say this, but this is a Trump era, folks, in the fault of the Republicans. Less regulations now. And you feel that this monopoly of Duke Power electricity can be increased at this particular We need to pay for your ash pits and cleanups and spills. Just another example of very poor management and construction of your waste pits stored in our beautiful state and near our lakes and rivers. I appreciate my electricity. I do. I love it. I couldn't live without it. I don't want to go back to primitive times. But my personal experience has been that Duke Power, listen to this, overcharged me for seventeen years for my electricity usage. The company had me as a gas user. Go home, tell everybody
Ms. Crown, you need to talk to these people over here, not the
Oh, okay. No, but they need to know. They need to go home and talk to their family, friends, and everybody. You need to call Duke tomorrow and find out if they have your particulars right. I have never had gas in my house, ever. And they have charged me a higher rate of usage, a higher cost of my electricity for seventeen years, have overcharged me. I have no gas in my house, never. It's a townhouse, seventeen hundred and sixty-eight square feet. Everyone, see, where am I at? My, after, my, my home normally is somewhat above a thousand kilowatts per month. And I looked at it from last December to this December. It's just a little bit over, you know, a thousand kilowatts. You know what it was in December this month? Twenty-eight hundred kilowatts of usage. Twenty-eight hundred. I've never had over two thousand in my life. But all of a sudden, it's twenty-eight hundred worth of kilowatt usage. The line graph on my usage is just like this, above a thousand, you know, it may be twelve hundred or thirteen hundred and like this or whatever. In December, it goes way up. They even had to have it go up higher, because it was almost three thousand worth of usage. Twenty-eight hundred kilowatts for a seventeen hundred and sixty-eight square foot home. And never in eighteen years, even when they were charging me the gas rates, did it ever go over two thousand, ever. It's always been below. So therefore, I think you've already increased the rates to the homeowners, because boy, mine sure didn't go up this month. I don't know if everybody was trying to figure out the bonuses for everybody at the end of the year in December, or what the deal is that's going on, that everybody, we didn't even have electricity for twelve hours one day, and we have sunny afternoons. So I don't, my unit doesn't even run most afternoons. My standard monthly cost is determined to be a hundred and fifty-seven dollars a month. That's what I pay. And at the end of the year last year, all I had to pay one month was twenty-six dollars. So I'm not even using, I'm not even using what the cost is. They have me paying a hundred and fifty-seven dollars per month, and that's why I think it went up in December. I wasn't meeting that quota, so they just made up for it in December at the end of the year. I truly don't believe anything they have to say. I just think it's big business with a monopoly on power. Eighteen percent increase, sixteen percent increase, fifteen percent increase. Who in the world even knows? They should be ashamed of themselves and even embarrassed. I appreciate my electricity, but I don't think that we should have to pay for the cleanup of all the ash pits and the spillage. I think it's just poor management and poor construction of your waste pits that are stored in our beautiful state, near our lakes and rivers. I think Duke should be ashamed of themselves. That people like Genaluska, Julian, Lake Julian, wherever the spill and was, filling the lakes, it's just awful. The environmental conditions are terrible. And the regulations, since Trump has gotten into office, I mean, there's no environmental regulations anymore. It's ridiculous.
Ms. Crown, let me ask you a question. You brought your service complaints into the bill, and you say that you've developed a bill for seventeen years. You brought that to the company's attention?
Yes, I did.
What was it?
Nothing.
You made no adjustment?
They didn't say, no adjustment. They didn't pay me back for anything, that's for sure. Nothing.
Of course, I'll ask you to please investigate this, um, in the U.S. reporting.
That's not all I have to say. Nothing good.
Psalmist with testimony about giving this case away the truth, the whole truth, shall be done.
Ms. Wild, please state your name and address for the record.
Janet Wild, one-six-five Cobb Road in Potters.
Please make your statement.
Thank you. You've heard all the stories. I agree with all of them. What I don't agree with is eighteen percent, sixteen percent, fifteen percent. One of the real reasons, we all made statements. I'm a senior, and I am Social Security, like many of us. I work with elderly. I see between eleven to twenty-five elderly people a week. When I'm asked to get something out of their refrigerator, and I open that refrigerator, and there's nothing in it, it's heartbreaking, because they can't afford it. Homes that have children that can't afford food, our church supplies food for those homes. I can't even imagine a one percent increase in electric for those people. You heard all the stories. I can go through them again, and I don't think I need to. You all know what they are, and you know what's right, and you know what's wrong. What I ask is do the right thing. Don't make our customers, your customers, pay for the mistakes that were made. Please, no increase. Thank you.
Ms. Wild.
My last witness is Robert.
Ms. Holmes with testimony about giving this case away the truth, the whole truth, shall be done.
Thank you for waiting, Mr. Smith. Please give your name and address for the record.
My name is Robert Smith. I live at four hundred Holbrood in the township of Potters.
Please make your statement.
Thank you. Good evening, public utilities commissioners and staff, and thank you for joining us here in Franklin tonight. I am a former board chair of the Jackson-Macon Conservation Alliance, also known as J M C A. Founded right here in Macon County in two thousand, J M C A was dedicated to protecting and preserving the natural environment and cultural character of the headwater regions of western North Carolina. In two thousand and fifteen, J M C A merged with two other environmental organizations under a new name, Mountain True, which champions resilient forest, clean water and energy, and healthy communities in twenty-three counties across western North Carolina. I'd like to begin by thanking you for your support of the Energy Innovation Task Force, a nationally unique partnership between the city of Asheville, Buncombe County, and Duke Energy, aimed at avoiding new fossil fuel infrastructure in western North Carolina, and moving our region to a clean energy future through increased use of energy efficiency programs, application of new technologies, and extensive community engagement. This kind of collaborative, creative thinking represents the ingenuity that we are capable of and the direction our energy future needs to move forward. Unfortunately, the request of Duke Energy Carolina's rate hike is an effort to put us in the opposite direction of that work and back to the past, which is why tonight, on behalf of Mountain True, and our reach of ten thousand members across western North Carolina, urge you to oppose this rate hike. I know that you've come to Franklin tonight so that the voices of western North Carolina, which is made up entirely of Duke Energy Carolina's customers, are represented before you make your decision. As a resident of Macon County, I'd like to share with you some facts about the economic realities of this part of the state. You may know that Jackson County and counties west of there, Macon, Swain, Graham, Cherokee, and Clay, have been named Tier One counties by the North Carolina Department of Commerce for two thousand and eighteen. This means they face the highest level of economic distress in the state. A great injustice in this rate hike lies in the fact that it is shared equally among all counties, despite enormous economic disparities. Take Mecklenburg County, for instance, home to Charlotte and many of the Duke executives who are proposing this rate hike. Mecklenburg County rates ninety-two out of one hundred of our counties for economic distress, meaning it is the eighth most well-off county in the state. Meanwhile, Graham County, just a rough west of here, is one of the poorest counties in the state. A family in Mecklenburg County makes a median income of fifty-seven thousand dollars, while in Graham County, the median household income is thirty-four thousand. In Mecklenburg County, fifteen percent of the household are in poverty, but in Graham County, the number of families living below the poverty line is twenty-two percent. Swain County has a median family income of a little over thirty-six thousand dollars and a twenty-four and a half percent poverty rate, while Yancey County has a median household income of thirty-six thousand four hundred dollars with a twenty-one point seven poverty rate. Working families in western North Carolina know that when you earn less money, you tend to use less electricity to make ends meet. When you're struggling to pay the bills and the mortgage and put food on the table, you learn to be careful about turning on the lights and turning up the thermostat. But with Duke Energy Carolina's proposal to increase our energy bills sixteen point seven percent, all families will be charged a minimum of seventeen dollars and seventy-nine cents per month, or about two hundred and thirteen dollars per year, even if they never turn on their lights. With Duke talks about their community engagement work, they often proudly publicize their programs that provide energy-efficient LED light bulbs and promote other energy-saving practices. However, with an increased base change rate of sixty-six percent, this rate hike could mean that electricity bills could still rise significantly for hard-working families in our region, no matter how wisely or efficiently they use electricity. This would also slam customers close on the heels of Duke rate hike in two thousand and thirteen, when energy rates for residential customers rose five percent. While this increase may be minimal for the wealthy decision makers at Duke, these costs translate to real sacrifices for working families in my part of the state. On top of that, it's against our values. We know that investing in clean energy like so We know that investing in clean energy like solar and wind along with energy efficiency initiatives are the future of energy for our region. And we know that you, Public Service Commissioners, support this vision because you're supporting the work of the Energy Innovation Task Force. It only takes looking at the breakdown of the rate hike to see that it asks the public to pay for Duke's past mistakes. Over half of this rate hike, a total of $336 million, would be used to pay for Duke's coal ash cleanup costs. North Carolina law states that utilities' costs can only be paid by customers if they are reasonably and prudently incurred. And we know that this is not the case here. In 2015, three Duke Energy companies, including Duke Energy Carolina's, pled guilty to nine criminal violations of the Clean Water Act for their failure to protect our waterways from coal ash pollution. Even Duke's own insurance provider refused its pay for these costs, stating that Duke failed to take reasonable measures to avoid and/or mitigate the damage resulting from coal ash disposal. More recently, it was revealed that Duke knew about the harms of coal ash back in the 1980s and refused to act then to protect our public interest. Now, Duke is trying to stick their customers with the bill even though they knew about this mess for the last 30 years and did nothing. Can't insult injury, they're even asking customers to pay for the boil water that communities, bottled waters that communities near their plants received after their drinking water is poisoned by Duke's coal ash mismanagement. Here in western North Carolina, small business owners and companies with far less wealth than Duke Energy take responsibility to clean up their messes all the time. As the largest utility company in the country, we know Duke Energy can pay for their mess. And we ask you to ensure that they do. Thank you.
We do not have any more customers signed up to speak.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we appreciate you coming out tonight. The commission has a lot of work in front of us. We have other customer hearings in other parts of the surface territory. And we're going to reconvene in Raleigh on the 19th. You can follow all of that on the webpage. And we'll have scores of witnesses, taken witnesses that have listened to you. It's all in command with the Red Bull. Thank you for coming out tonight. Take care for a while.